This is an appeal in the matter of Churchill and Martha Tidfield, County Borough Council. Par. 1.
Good morning, Mr. Weir. I'm sorry we're a little late.
Not at all, my lady. My lady, I understand from your clerk in the clerk's room that my Lord, the Master of Rolls, that the further document that I produced yesterday has reached its destination.
Thank you. I mean shared with everybody, I understand.
Very grateful. So it addresses at least some, if not all, of the legal issues that my Lord, the Master of Rolls, was keen that I set out. Can I start, my lady, by just taking you to two further documents to confirm that the whole premise for the defendant in this case and appeal has been that the claimant should avail himself of the defendant's ICP so as not to burden the defendant with legal costs and damages payments?
Where do you get that from?
Did my lady... Sorry, my lady.
Where do you get that from?
My lady, yes, I was going to give you a couple of references now. So there's a witness statement from Mr. Jones, the defendant's solicitor, which you'll find in the witness bundle at page 24.
Yes. Yes.
Paragraph four. This is dated the 28th of March 2022. And in paragraph four, I would say between the whole bunches, but your ladyship will know what I mean. The defendant's counsel, which is the smallest... I'm going to speak loudly because I think we're fighting some form of works outside, my lady. So forgive me if I appear to be shouting. It's deliberate in that sense. The defendant's counsel, which is the smallest in Wales, has since 2019 received seven claims, two of which are subject to court proceedings. If each involves similar anticipated legal expenditure to this claim, this will generate over £10 million in legal costs and fees. None of the claims against the defendant's counsel have been brought by solicitors in Wales. The potential consequences of having to pay damages and costs are huge and worrying for local councils, et cetera. Take a point. For all, for local councils, plural. Yes, for local councils, plural, who year in, year out, having to manage reduced funding from Welsh government. And then if my lady was to go, please, to the supplemental bundle at page 89, it's tab nine for those in tabs. Your ladyship will see that you're now in what's described as a defendant's note or application 16th March 2022. Your ladyship have that? It's numbered at the top, my lady, in this situation.
Yes, I have that.
And your ladyship will see at paragraph four, the bottom, under the heading 'The Council's Position'.
Yes.
This claim was issued prematurely and was and may remain unnecessary. It appears to be an exercise in the generation of legal costs, et cetera. If you go over the page, paragraph five. The council does not wish to prevent the claimant from pursuing a county court claim, but to delay it, dot, dot, dot. There is no prejudice to him in attempting it and substantial legal costs may be saved. Go on to the last sentence. Your ladyship see that? In paragraph five. And paragraph eight. It may be that the motivation behind the claim is not the eradication of Japanese knotwood, but the generation of a claim for damages and costs. The whole premise of the case, my lady, is go through the ICP. You won't recover your costs. We won't give you damages, but we will fix the problem that you say you're complaining of.
Well, is there a distinction to be made between avoiding any costs at all or avoiding huge costs?
My lady, forgive me, but this is... The submission I made yesterday was, please stand back and see just exactly what's going on. This isn't about one set of costs against another. It's about the defendant saying there is a cost-free internal complaints procedure which you should go through. So it's about all costs, my lady. That's absolutely plain. Now, if, because at one point, your ladyship made an observation to the effect, well, if one looks at the terms of the ICP, they're so broad that it could be said that they include the power with the council to pay for the claimant's costs. And just putting to one side the public law aspect of that, because I'm not sure that a document put in those vague terms would necessarily be said to empower a council member to make a payment in relation to costs, not least when you set it against a backdrop that we see from Mr. Jones's statement of, blimey, we shouldn't be having to pay these costs. Think about the local residents of Merthyr Tydfil County Borough Council. But just parking all of that, suspending that just for a moment. If in fact the ICP provided for the payment of damages and the payment of costs, then I may forty or rate the submission five that I made yesterday. Because the submission five I made yesterday was, this has already happened. It's just happened by writing a letter of claim. And the only difference, as I sought to make my submission five going into six, the only difference was that they won't pay our legal costs. But otherwise, we're putting them on notice and there's Mr. Calipettis, my name for Mr. Calipettis confirmed, it was essentially treated as a stage one complaint. Well, if it's actually going through to assess the damages and costs, then it's all happened because it happened by a letter of claim. That's exactly the function of a letter of claim. And for the avoidance of doubt, in response to the observations of my Lord, the Master of Rolls in relation to the recovery of costs pre-action and the submission I made, that that is absolutely the norm in any personal injury action, save one which is controlled by legislative scheme, in which case look to the legislative scheme for the rules that it provides. This is also the position, we see this from the bundle, in relation to housing disrepair claims. Because if you kindly go to the authorities bundle, and I should say it, as best I understand, other areas of civil litigation at large. I've come to that. But if you kindly go to the pre-action protocol for housing disrepairs at page 627. And for those using tabs, it's authority two, tab 33. And at 617, you can see it's the pre-action protocol for possession claims by social landlords and pre-action protocol for housing disrepair claims. And if you then kindly go on to page 627, paragraph 11, and it's been sidebarred. The court will see, if the tenant's claim is settled without litigation on terms which justify bringing it, the landlord will pay the tenant's reasonable costs.
Yep.
And that position was confirmed. And I'm very grateful to my learned friends for the council, for my mistakenly having produced a case which was already in the bundle. So there's no need for apologies for overburdening the court. But if the court can go now to authorities one bundle. So the Lee case, it's tab seven, it's page 103. It starts at page 94. It's Court of Appeal, Judgment of Lord Justice Hughes. It was a case in which the tenant claimant instructed solicitors, negotiated pre-action and repairs were undertaken. And it raised an issue which I think my Lord, the Master of Rolls had raised yesterday in relation to the effect of essentially part payment and what that does to which level the case should come in on. And you can see paragraph 34 and then paragraph 36. It comes in at the higher level in relation to pre-action costs until the time when the works were done to reduce it to the lower level. Can I invite the court, please, to page 103 and page 104 and kindly to read paragraphs 34 and 36?
And what's the headline, your point you're making at this stage, Mr. Weir?
My lady, the headline points I'm making is that where a claimant has a justifiable claim and needs legal assistance in advancing it, and for that, I would say, see also paragraph 34, four lines up on the bottom of paragraph 34. And the claimant, what I will call wins his claim, or her claim. The claimant properly can expect to recover reasonable legal costs of doing so. That is a point of generality in our respectful submission. So there isn't a cut-off great difference between not issuing and issuing. Otherwise, every claimant would have to issue to recover the legal fees. And this is even provided for in a rule in the White Book, 46.14, at page 1517, if you have a copy of the White Book. But I can just tell the court. Forty... Forty-six, fourteen, my lord. CPR 46, fourteen, at page 1517, is headed 'Costs Only Proceedings' and provides a mechanism by which parties who have settled their claim pre-action with the recovery of costs can have the costs assessed. And that's because this is a commonplace. Normally, they would just end up being agreed. But this is a completely ordinary path to resolution of, I'll call it litigation, even though, if you like, it resolves pre-issue of a claim form.
Doesn't quite make your point, Mr. Weir, because this depends on the parties agreeing that one of them has to pay the costs.
Oh, I understand. I absolutely understand what this shows and that which it doesn't prove. I've sought to establish, to show by reference to personal injury in tenants. And here we have a rule in the CPR which anticipates this very issue, my lord. And then it's a question of joining the dots, if I can put it that way. But it... My lord, this is a sort of an absolute given out in the real world of solicitors engaging pre-action in a case unless the defendant is able to say, we absolutely don't accept you should have used solicitors at all, which would be limited to the most rudimentary case. And Japanese knotwood, by way of example, is not that case.
So I just want to contextualise where we are. Within your submission seven, you say there are multiple additional factors in addition to, plus non-recovery of legal costs that make the ICP or a direction for stay for ICP incompatible with the right of access of court. That's where we are, is it?
My lady, no, that's where we were yesterday.
Right, so which bit of your submissions are we on now?
I'm seeking to respond to two observations from the court yesterday.
Right.
And the two observations were to the effect, is it really the case that you can expect to recover costs? And can't the ICP give you costs? And I hope to have provided that.
And you said absolutely no way the ICP can give you costs.
Correct, my lady.
And there's an expectation of recovery of legal costs.
Where a claimant...
Yes, I understand.
Has a justifiable claim for which he needs legal assistance, then the only issue is, and he wins, so that's justifiable claim. The only issue is how much, and there's even a mechanism if the parties can't settle it. And that's under the civil procedure rules. But just again, to take a small step backwards, my lady, what I'm saying is absolutely in line with ordinary sense. Why? Because this is an example, therefore, of what would otherwise be asymmetric litigation. And calling it litigation is a generic term for the pre-action part as well. But to be asymmetric litigation in which the claimant was not entitled to the benefit of legal advice, because he can't recover it, equals not entitled to it, in the real world. And yet the defendant is. The claimant, of course, needs legal advice to understand his rights, his remedies and the strength of his rights and the value of his remedies. Otherwise, plainly, there would not be effective access to justice or equality of arms. It's all very fundamental. So that which you see in the disrepair protocol is simply consistent with all of those principles. It's not odd or difficult. It's absolutely aligned to the good sense of those principles in our respectful submission. And that goes, in essence, my lady, where does it go? It goes to how the problem in this case is that the defendant says, please go through an ICP without legal assistance. And that simply cannot be permitted consistently with the right of access to court and equality to arms. Claimant needs legal advice in this case, so he must be entitled to recover for it. The ICP does not do so. A pre-action letter, response and pre-action resolution should lead to the recovery of costs. If not, there'd be litigation and that would lead to the recovery of costs. Of course, if the claimant is successful. If the claimant fails and the claim is nuisance, no costs. My lady, the eighth submission that I was, had foreshadowed yesterday morning was that the current position of his taking engagement with an ICP into account on the issue of costs at a higher level of generality strikes the right balance, albeit in this case, subject to the... I might try to reduce it to a wrinkle, but my Lord, the Master of Rolls might say it's more than that, on the facts of this case, the concession in relation to, or the non-challenge by way of respondent's notice for the finding of the learned deputy district judge. It's a case where it couldn't be taken into account adversely against the claimant precisely because the requirement to engage at all with the ICP offends against the claimant's right of access to the court for all of the reasons I've given yesterday. So that's where I would still respectfully invite the court to recognise that even absent a respondent's notice, it is simply internally inconsistent for this court to end up in a position, if of course the court adopts any of the submissions that I'm making, to recognise that the claimant's right of access to court meant that he was not required to engage with the ICP and at the same time to uphold a decision of a deputy district judge saying the claimant acted unreasonably thereby. That's to create an internally inconsistent judgment. The court might say, well, that's my fault for not filing a respondent's notice. I would invite the court to look on a rather larger scale at that issue rather than on the micro scale of holding me to the absence of respondent's notice, but of course then leave that to this court. Can I start with the Civil Procedure Act, which the court will find in the authorities bundle at page 1083? So it's authority bundle two, tab 57.
1083.
1083, my lady.
Yes, I have it, thank you.
We've only got a part, but I'm actually going to refer simply to section one of the Civil Procedure Act.
And section five relates to practice directions.
It does, my lord.
And we're dealing here with a practice direction.
My lord, we are. I've taken the court to the Court of Appeal Authority in relation to practice directions. But if the court would be assisted, will happily provide section five. Perhaps we should have done.
And also the constitution of the form act, part one, schedule two.
I'm very grateful, my lord. We'll make sure that those have provided to the court. Apologies for not having done so. As the court can see, section one, this is primary legislation which provides the power for the civil procedure rules to be made. See section one, three. The power to make civil procedure rules is to be exercised with a view to securing that the civil justice system is accessible, fair and efficient. I don't wish to create difficulties where perhaps they're not necessary, but for the avoidance of doubts, as I've set out in our written submissions, a claimant's case in relation to the description, civil justice system, unless, and of course, I will obviously defer to the court if I'm, for instance, taken to a definitional section and I've missed or some such. But otherwise, our position would be the civil justice system is the system that takes a civil right through issue to trial and, as we see from section 11A, to appeal to this civil division of this court. That's the civil justice system. Mediation, by way of example, is not a part of the civil justice system. And respectfully to all of those who've made submissions to the contrition and with the greatest respect to anything that may have been said extrajudicially and whatever the importance of describing for other ends the system as an integrated system, for the purposes of definition of the civil justice system, we respectfully do not accept that one can say the civil justice system is an integrated system which embraces ADR. The civil justice system is the system in this country which enables a claimant to pursue a civil right to a trial and appeal. At the same time, as set out in our written submissions, we readily accept that the requirement to exercise with a view to securing a civil justice system is efficient enables the Civil Procedures Rule Committee when making the civil procedure rules, to make rules to encourage alternative dispute resolution. And if I'm using that, as I've said I would, in terms of third party, also settlement. But in any event, whatever generic word is used to cover all forms of settlement, whether mediated by a third party or not. Given that this is the source of the power to make the rules, the submission which you see I've made in writing already yesterday afternoon, is that here we're in the first stage of the analysis as set out by Lord Reed in unison. And I don't know if it would help the court for me to go back to the...
I don't think so.
I'm very grateful. Your ladyship will recall, before paragraph eighty, there was a precursor to paragraph eighty. Paragraph eighty is if there's a power, then the power must be exercised pursuant to a legitimate aim and in a manner which is proportionate to the legitimate aim. But before you get to that, you've got to discover whether you have that power in the first place. And the position in respect of this appeal is, in our respectful submission, so stark that it simply could not be said that there's a power under the civil procedure rules, just because it says there's a power to stay. There is not a power under the civil procedure rules within the four walls of the primary legislation which enabled a civil procedure rules committee to draft CPR 26.4/5 so as to enable a district judge to stay these proceedings.
You say 26.4 is outside the powers...
No, my lord, that...
What did you say?
That's the same. I'm in the same position I was yesterday when your lordship made the same observation yesterday as to whether I'm saying it's ultra vires. I'm not saying that when the Civil Procedures Rules Committee drafts 26.4/5 and provide a power to the court to stay proceedings, undoubtedly the court has power in multiple circumstances to stay proceedings. But in the circumstances of this case, and for the reasons which I've set out yesterday and don't propose to rehearse, the position is so stark that it cannot be said that exercising what's understood to be that power in that way is consistent with the primary legislation which limits the scope of the power under section one, three, to being exercised with a view to securing that the civil justice system is accessible, fair and efficient. It's a little bit like a sort of ex parte spahum scenario. You've got, whatever the power is, no power is unlimited.
There's no definition of the civil justice system?
Well, I'm extremely grateful and relieved in a sense that if I hadn't found it. I would say, if your ladyship's asking me, I haven't found one. If your ladyship's asking me, but I'm always alert to the fact that the court might do so and tell me this is the answer in terms of what that means. So I've made a submission on the basis I wasn't able to find anything.
A bit of your submission there that I don't understand is the power, you say that the rule 26. whatever, which is to stay for settlement is not ultra vires because it can be exercised in a way which is consistent with everything we talked about. But you say it can't be exercised on the facts of this case. But as I understand it, the reason why you say that is because you say the characteristic of the settlement process, let's call it that, that you're talking about is because it's not part of the civil justice system as you define it. But that's true for all...
No, my lord, that's not, that was not the intended submission. It's my fault for not making that clear. First of all, I'm seeking to define civil justice because it's in section one, three that I'm looking at and therefore it's beholden upon me to...
I'm taking your definition.
Just to set out my case in relation to what that means. I'm not saying that, because I've already made that acceptance or concession, call it what one will, that the civil justice system being efficient enables the court, in an appropriate case, to stay for the purposes of settlement. But in this case, when you are at the earliest possible stage, the claimant is entitled to legal representation and then would be being required to delay permanently or temporarily, depending on the position which is adopted and submissions are made yesterday, the bringing of his civil right so as to engage in entirely unfair and asymmetric negotiations when he is coerced subtly, inevitably, encouraged to settle without any legal advice. That scenario simply doesn't come within what I would describe as the four walls of the power of the make civil procedure rules to ensure the civil justice system is accessible, fair and efficient. In other words, although it may say, here's a power to stay generally, that is not a power to stay generally in all circumstances. It is a power which is delimited. That's what I'm saying, my lord.
Unfortunately, Mr. Weir, your written submissions acknowledge, and I'm reading now your third written submission, even where a statutory power authorises an intrusion by the court upon the right of access to the court, brackets, which this one does, it is to be interpreted as authorising only such a degree of intrusion as is reasonably necessary to fulfil the objective of the provision in question.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, then you come to the issues of legitimate aim and proportionality.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, as I understand it, you are not saying that you cannot consider the legitimate aim, which is here to get cases concluded, settled, and the proportionality of a stay. And I don't think you can have it both ways. Either there is no statutory foundation, which is not your submission, as I understand it here, because you acknowledge there is a statutory foundation in the rules. But if there is a statutory foundation, then you move to points two and three. And then they are at large. And the court can do what it thinks appropriate in the circumstances, depending on the circumstances, including the nature of the scheme proposed or the negotiation proposed or whatever is proposed. Isn't that right?
My lord, not quite in my respectful submission. The position which I'm seeking to set out, and forgive me if I haven't done it with sufficient clarity, is that there is a prior step. And then if I'm wrong in relation to the prior step, there's legitimate aim, stroke proportionality. The prior step is the paragraphs four to eight on page two of my...
I know, but at paragraph six, you accept that part of making that civil justice system efficient is having a power to make rules which encourage external resolution of claims.
Yes, ma'am.
Therefore, there is a statutory authority which there is vires. And the only question then is legitimate aim and proportionality.
My lord...
As I understand what you're saying is, in principle, there is a power, but on the facts of this case, there is no power.
Yes, my lady.
And therefore, there is an anterior question.
Yes, my lady.
Before proportionality and all the rest of it.
Yes, my lady. That is what I'm saying. And see unison, seventy-eight to seventy-nine. That is my submission. That is, that is my submission. And if I'm wrong in relation to that, and we're looking at legitimate aim and proportionality, see the submissions which I've already made. So I'm very grateful, lady, that foreshortens all of that. And that is consistent, for instance, one of the rules of the civil procedure which have been obviously taken to already, but I just want to go back to briefly is one point four two E.
Say, which one?
One point four two E, my lord. We were taken to it, I think, by my lord of justice first unless I'm mistaken. And it's page seventeen of the White Book, my lady. And that's, that's the provision that says the court must further the overriding objective by actively managing cases. Active case management includes encouraging the parties to use an alternative dispute resolution procedure if the court considers it appropriate and that appropriate and facilitating the use of such procedures. And, and here I'm, I'm just going back to the, depending on the case that I am meeting. If I'm meeting a case that says you can strike out or stay indefinitely, the claimant's claim, that is not of a piece with the civil procedure rules which expressly and simply use the word encouraging. And I don't shy and I don't know why anyone should shy from use of the word mandatory as an appropriate use of the English language and to describe a case that I have at times been having to meet. But mandatory is no place in relation to alternative dispute resolution per the current state of play of the civil procedure rules. And the ordinary position is that the specific civil procedure ruled, rule trumps the general. If there's a specific civil procedure rule dealing with an issue, for instance, classically service of a claim form and the like, that's the one you go to, not a general power. And a general power to stay has to be read consistently with one point four two E. And it is not consistent with the terms of the civil procedure rules for the court to impose its own approval of a mandatory precondition to litigation, namely by way of engagement with an ICP. And that goes to my final submission, my lady, which is that this then becomes a matter for legislation. I understand the civil procedure rules are delegated legislation, but that's, that is in my respectful submission, the limit of the civil procedure rules. My lord, the master of roles has already observed or made observations in relation to specific rules in low value personal injury actions. There is reference in various of the intervenors' written submissions to the employment tribunal position. And the employment tribunal positions, this court knows, section eighteen A of the Employment Tribunals Act nineteen ninety six requires the claimant as a precondition...
Sorry, could you give me the reference again?
Yes, my lady. Section eighteen A of the Employment Tribunals Act nineteen ninety six. There are associated employment tribunal rules. Would it assist, my lady, were we to produce those afterwards?
Oh, we can find them, don't worry. Thank you.
And it, but even there where Parliament expressly intervenes, all the claimant is required to do as a precondition to accessing the employment tribunal is to contact ACAS and obtain what's known as an EC, early conciliation certificate. The claimant is not required to engage in conciliation at all if they don't wish to do so. There is no rule or practice that the claimant should go through the employer's internal grievance procedure. And many employers have internal grievance procedures before issuing his or her ET claim. And that is plainly because it would be an inappropriate fetter on the right of the claimant's access to the tribunal. See this case. It's that fundamental, it's rightly so, that Parliament has, has been extremely careful in the way that it has set its precondition and limited its precon...
You might be said it's because it was in nineteen ninety six.
Well, my, my lord, the Civil Procedure Act is in nineteen ninety seven, limiting the scope of the civil procedure rules. But there's been a constitutional right of access as identified by Lord Reed forever. And of course, we were party to the convention as a nation before the Human Rights Act came into force in October two thousand. But my lord, these are core principles. See the unison judgment and the identification of these core principles from earlier House of Lords authorities as set out carefully by Lord Reed. These are absolutely core principles, my lord, that simply can't be, be ridden over. And the point is that it falls for the legislature expressly to decide to set up a scheme in closely defined circumstances for any mandatory pre-action activity before the claimant is entitled to exercise his right of access to the court. And that then will involve in the ordinary way, a proper democratic process, close consultation with relevant stakeholders. And in that way, the economic drivers, as identified by my lord the master of roles, will be given their due and proper weight. This is not the court, however constituted, and even if the same members of the court have an enormous role to play, wearing a different hat, it is a different hat. And this is not the court respectfully to determine those issues. That is for primary and or delegated legislation. My lady and my lords, I hope that in that way I've at least addressed whether or not satisfied, at least addressed the court in relation to all of the issues that I know were issues that the court wished answers in relation to, or at least responses. But if there are any other issues that I have yet to address, I'd be pleased to lose it.
Thank you, Mr. Weir, you've been extremely clear and very helpful. Thank you very much. Here's Mr. Calipettis.
My lady, I'm conscious that Mr. Calipettis will want to reply. Globally, I wonder if it would be helpful if I were just to take five or six minutes on the jurisdictional point which was raised by the supplementary submissions of Mr. Weir.
Well, what have you discussed with, between the parties as to how we're going to deal with the rest of the time available?
Well, we've discussed how much time is needed and I don't think that would mean we run over.
Right, does anybody else on the intervenor's side wish to say anything? No, thank you, Mr. Calipettis, do you have any...
Well, my lady, this is a point that, as you know, is, I'm going to say ambush, but that's a tendentious word. It's somewhat ironic, I feel I find myself back in the Court of Appeal after Halsey being ambushed in something involving Lord Dyson, but there we are. I'm not in a position to deal with this point today. If my only friend from the bar council can, I'd be very grateful if he does it.
Which point precisely are you taking, are you referring to?
It's really the point to paragraphs four to eight of the supplementary skeleton which came in last night.
I just give you...
The vires point. What, what, what rules can be made and in particular what rules can be made pre-action and what rules can be made post-action? Because it does seem to us there may be quite an important difference between the two.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is have a quick break, five minutes to discuss this. I have to say that I had always thought the unison was in play and that the forty eight paragraphs weren't entirely new. But I may be wrong about that. Can I just hear from Mr. Weir on that and then Mr. Vinyl will take a view, Mr. Calipettis will take a quick view on where we go. Is this a brand new point? In fairness, I know you'll be fair.
Yes, ma'am, yes, my lady.
As I say, five minutes and we'll come back in then, thank you.
Court rise if able. The lashings still on, so if you have a... You might not want to have lashings on.
Sorry.
Lashings still on.
Everyone get their vest.
I think fine. The whole thing goes.
Yes.
Well, it is just too hard.
For one, thanks.
Thanks for going to see what you have.
Yeah. Would that be very useful? So it's...
Yep.
Okay.
Don't see.
Do you want it to turn into something... Such products...
But there's a risk of confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Vinyl, Mr. Calipettis. We think the sensible thing is, is indeed for Mr. Vinyl to make some short submissions on what is agreed to be a, a new point. And Mr. Calipettis, we'll make sure that you aren't prejudiced in any way at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yes.
My lady, I'm grateful. On the facts of this case, we are in a post-issue case. But we are focusing on an internal complaints procedure. And typically, internal complaints procedures come into play pre-issue.
Absolutely.
And we, we must bear in mind that, that we're in slightly odd territory as a result of that. The position in relation to post-action cases in terms of jurisdiction to make practice directions is in our submission straightforward and well established. Of course, the court can make directions which, make practice directions and rules which deal with the use of alternative dispute resolution procedures, pretty much, however so defined. And the rules do so, do so already. And we know from the case of Lomax that it's permissible for early neutral evaluation to be a precondition of a case continuing. So the post-action position is straightforward. What is more difficult, what does not directly arise on this appeal, is the pre-action position. Can I invite you to go in the authorities bundle to page nine hundred and twenty three, which is the recent Civil Justice Council review of pre-action protocols? And there is a section which starts on page nine hundred and twenty three at paragraph one point two one, which sets out a note on the court's powers regarding pre-action conduct. And it makes the point in paragraph one twenty three, four lines up from the bottom of the page, some doubts have been expressed about the vires of rules regulating the conduct of parties who resolve or do not proceed with threatened legal action, given the CPR only applies to court proceedings. who resolve or do not proceed with threatened legal action, given the CPR only applies to court proceedings." And then over the page, at paragraph one twenty-four on bundle page nine hundred and twenty-four, the Civil Justice Council say, "None of the recommendations in this report are intended to alter the existing framework for regulation of pre-action conduct, namely, the court only has jurisdiction over pre-action conduct where that is provided for in primary legislation. An example would be pre-action disclosure, where there is specific statutory power, where there is a dispute about costs for a claim that is settled at the pre-action stage." And that, I suspect, is a reference to the Lee case at tab seven, which Mr Weir took you to, and/or perhaps to the provision in part forty-six about cost-only proceedings. But that, I think, the CPR forty-six power only arises by agreement of the parties, in effect. It seems to be rather different. Going back, or, or, sorry, picking up paragraph one twenty-four, or where a legal claim is issued by the parties. Should any future challenges to the vires of aspects of pre-action protocols be made, this may have implications for some of the recommendations in this report if they're not supported by primary legislation. Whether the courts choose to use their inherent jurisdiction to expand the orders they can make before any claim is issued, as they have done in the past, is properly a matter for the court. And, of course, we were all, we all grew up being told that although there was express statutory power to make pre-action injunctions in the Supreme Court Act, there was also an inherent jurisdiction in the court to regulate pre-action conduct in that way. So the point which the CJC is making, and I don't seek to go beyond this, is that it is not clear that the court could lawfully make rules preventing the issue of proceedings unless, say, the parties had first attended mediation. It is not clear that the court could properly make a rule preventing the issue of proceedings by way of example, unless, say, the parties had first attended mediation. It is interesting that the amendment to the nineteen ninety-six Employment Act, which we think was not in fact until twenty twelve, or maybe twenty fourteen, but there there is an express statutory power. And note, there is provision to suspend limitation from.
But that's not this case.
My lord, it isn't. And it may be you say nothing about pre-action stuff. But particularly because internal complaints procedures typically and classically arise pre-action, I think all I'm saying is there needs to be caution in the approach and an acute consciousness of the difference between preventing access to the court in the first place because of something that has happened at a pre, or hasn't happened, at a pre-action stage, and staying or perhaps striking out claims where the party has invoked the jurisdiction of the court and the court is managing that process, because those are the post commencement cases. And we are one of those cases.
We are dealing with an after-issue case.
Exactly.
But it's.
So not.
But it's interesting, isn't it? I mean, this is a different point, but it is notable that the council has not sought a stay for mediation. It has sought a stay for ICP, which, as you say, is counterintuitive in a post-action world. It does emphasise, perhaps, not for you to comment, I suspect, the fact that this is all about avoiding cost recovery. There we are. That's a different point. But your point is, yeah, different world.
For pre-action, unclear that there would be vires to make a rule compelling mediation as a precondition to issue. And even if.
Well, by the rule committed, it almost certainly wouldn't.
Yes, you would need.
The only wrinkle on that is section twenty-four of the Judicial Review and Courts Act, which allows the APRC to make rules for the pre-action space.
Yes.
And I've no idea, as chair of the APRC, whether we're thinking of making this kind of rule. Certainly, I haven't yet been considering it.
And that's for online?
But, well, yes. I mean, query what that section means. It's quite difficult to understand. The, I mean, the important thing for our purposes, or anyway, looked at from my angle, I'm a simple, I'm a simple judge, Mr Vinal.
A simple chancery lawyer.
A simple chancer.
Yes.
And as I see, we are looking at the question of whether or not there is power in the court to either stay proceedings or direct the parties to enter into a non-court-based dispute resolution process once the proceedings have been issued. And I take it that it is common ground with everybody except Mr Churchill that there is such power. And that the power, it doesn't matter whether you're talking about mediation with an independent mediator or any other process which goes on a spectrum from go outside and talk to each other, which happens every day in the courts, to go and mediate in front of a very expensive mediator and don't come back until three months later when you have done that. But the power is the same. And then the question moves to the discretion of the court to exercise the power. But the point you have to deal with, it seems to me, is that Mr Weir has argued that that power, whilst it exists in theory, cannot be exercised in certain types of situation, one of which is this ICP. And you need to deal with that. And he says unison says that at paragraphs eighty-seven to ninety, and that's what Lord Reed has told us. And so that is a limitation on the power.
No, for the reasons which I had explained yesterday, we don't accept that. I made my submissions on what the test should be.
I don't think you even spoke yesterday, Mr Vinal.
Oh, two days ago, my lord. But I don't think, I don't think I have anything else to add to what I said two days ago.
Well, okay. I mean, it's a matter entirely for you, but I wondered whether you could make some comment on Mr Weir's document. Do you accept the limitation that he put this morning on the power?
Well, I wasn't, no disrespect is meant by this, but it, I think Mr Weir accepts that there is power to make rules which might go to the issue of when and whether you have to mediate or take such other steps as the court thinks fit. And on that point, we are agreed. My submission is, it being established that that power exists in any particular case, whether what is done is compliant with the constitutional right of access to the court or on six rights, depends on the application of the three-stage test which I described. It's as simple as that, for a post-issue case.
Yeah, but he says it's not. I mean, just so you're clear.
Yes.
Because my lady asked him expressly. And he said, "No, the power does not exist in the case of an ICP of this kind."
Well.
Because unison tells you that in paragraph ninety. Maybe you should look at unison and see if you agree with that. Sorry. Paragraph eighty, Mr Vinal.
Paragraph eighty.
Well, it's seventy-eight to eighty-one.
But this is. Raymond and Honey and Secretary of State for the Home Department. I understand it, those are cases about whether there is vires to make a rule of a particular kind. So that goes to the ability for someone who is imposing rules to make rules of a particular kind. But it is accepted, as I understand it, that in a post-issue case, the courts have a power, power given by Parliament to make rules. And the power given, because it deals with the efficiency of the civil justice system, is wide enough to enable the courts to make rules of a type which might say, "There are some things you must do before you can continue with your claim." And we know that, of course, the court can make rules requiring money to be paid upfront. It can make rules that you have to particularise your case, that you have to serve witness statements. It can also make rules that you have to do whatever the court directs in terms of mediating or taking some steps towards alternative dispute resolution. So there's no difficulty with the fundamental vires. This is not. You are not, but prison officers making rules about what goes on in the prison. The Rules Committee is, essentially, judges making rules about what happens in the courts, and you are allowed to do that. And so the only question is the three-stage test, the Article Six test, or, we say it's in substance the same, the common law right of access to the court.
Thank you very much, Mr Vinal. Yes, Mr Calipatis?
Do you see, my lady, my lords? Whilst you still have the CPR report, I was asking if you could put the next page of Steelz and Paps, but I went, if you'd just make a note, that records the views of all the respondents to that inquiry and the summary of their views, perhaps were necessary means of enforcing the primary purposes of CPR overriding objective.
Sorry, this is, we were back on page nine-two-three, looking at the CJC report, and if we go over the page, just.
Page nine-two-five.
Thank you.
The role of the PAPs, paragraph one point two-five to one point two-seven to one point two-eight. Just while you had it over, it seemed convenient to.
Yes, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. Yes.
Pretty grateful to my old friend in our council to field the jurisdiction points, if necessary, my lady, my lords. And I can reserve the right to put something in writing to you free from.
Yes, I think what.
In our respectful submission, with the greatest respect to Mr Weir, this is a bit of a red herring. Listening to him this morning, I had more the impression it was a concern to preserve their right to recover costs rather than any interest in the efficiency of the court system. Perhaps that's an unkind observation, and I don't mean to be unkind to him. Lady, my lords, what I propose to do, if it is due, is to deal with the three issues that my lord Master Rolls identified yesterday and brought to Mr Weir. Give you my answer to those. If I may, I'd like to look at our internal complaints procedure in more detail, because it would be my submission that does not preclude a claimant asking for costs. And there's nothing in there, as I think, my lady, you've already observed, preventing costs being an issue. And more importantly, what's being glossed over, for sure unintentionally, is that at some stage, the council say we might even suggest mediation. If you're talking about the real world, perhaps you'd allow me to, Mr, tell you what in a real world would happen in mediation in this case. There are three issues between the parties. The first is eradication of knotweed. The second is the diminution of value, if any, to Mr Churchill's land. And the third is any damages for the loss of enjoyment of not the whole of the garden, but the back end of his garden where he's now built a shed. First issue wouldn't be an issue of mediation, because the council say we'll do it. And I see what is already observed, my old friend's client.
Just wait a minute, please. That's all right. Okay, sorry. Just go back a bit.
Sorry, my lord. As has already been observed, my old friend's client's claim is for an injunction. And it's an injunction for the council to remove the knotweed from his land, which is peculiar, and at the same time, he's asking for twenty-five thousand eight hundred pounds to do it himself. And that's why the dispute judge cost out that claim in reducing the claim to nine thousand pounds. So the issue of not, would not be an issue in the mediation. What would be the issue would be three things. First, as I say, the value diminution, if any. Secondly, loss of enjoyment, which is purely cash. And thirdly, I'm absolutely certain the claimant will say, "Look, I've had to take legal advice. Isn't reasonable. I have something." And that would be a discussion. An mediator would be put into both parties separately and together. Look at what happens if we can't resolve this. You're going to be involved in some fairly expensive litigation. There's risks for Mr Churchill, because it's not a demission of liability. But in spite of the non-demission liability and the uncertainty of where this knotweed came from, and your activities in your own garden, digging it up, and which knows where that came from, you didn't tell us. So that's your uncertainty. As far as the council is concerned, it's an uncertainty that if they are not prepared to at least look at the issue of costs, they face an expensive trial with an order for possible at the end of the day, subject to any right to part of part thirty-six. And that discussion in mediation, if you forgive me for saying this, happens day in, day out in almost every commercial mediation. And it's then the party's choice. And there's nothing in the IPC which is a barrier to Mr Churchill's right to go to court if he wants to. The IPC as drafted is not a barrier. It's a gateway to an opportunity to resolve your difficulties at minimal expense without the need to go through another year waiting, if, get that quickly in front of the court, to see what the judge will say. And bearing in mind it's only four years before even raising the issue. And then his client believes that we have constructive knowledge of the knotweed on his land. As I think I said to you first day here, his land is at the top of a very steep embankment. You can see photographs in the bundle if you really want to look at it. But unless you are peeping over the wall, you may not see it. If you don't be told that knotweed is in the garden at the top of the embankment, how are you supposed to have constructive knowledge it's there?
We're not here to debate the merits, are we?
No, I'm just making an observation, my lady, forgive me.
Yes.
And so the issue would be discussed in the mediation, and there'd be a settlement. Because unless people were completely off their rovers, nobody's going to get caught on this case. What I was saying was that the pleading says that you had constructive knowledge and you failed to treat on our land. Well, we offered to treat on their land and were met with refusal to entry. Now, that alone could be an abuse of the court proceedings. And if your leadership and your lordships are with what my old friend, Mr Vinian, has said, that this is now, they've issued, we're in court, therefore they're subject to the rules of the court as to how they're going to conduct the case in the future. And it was asked of you on the first day, and I think I probably didn't do myself justice, or my case justice, rather, in relation to the answer. We do say there is a point in ordering a stay now for this reason. The court has a power, as you've known, you've been taken through it, I won't say ad nauseam, but certainly in detail. The judge has power to encourage, advise in fairly stringent terms. And what the judge could have said, "Well, I'm going to stay this for three months for three reasons." And what the judge could have said, "Well, I'm going to stay this for three months for three reasons." One, you've not observed the pre-action protocols, and that may rebound on you if you pursue this case on the issue of costs, so think about it. Secondly, you've asked for an injunction to remove the notreid from your land, and they've offered to do it. So why is that anymore an issue? Thirdly, just remember that you won't get a result from the court, at least for here. And if this notreid is such a nuisance to you, why not allow it to be removed for free as is being offered? Think about it, come back. If at that stage you still don't want to engage in the process, I shall ask you one question. Did you at least consider it? Because up to then, as the court would have appreciated, every single response from Martha Tiddles, lone solicitor in the legal department, please use that procedure. I bet, no. You don't, you can't force us, we're not obliged to do it. So they didn't even consider it, and they can't even say that they looked at it and didn't like it.
What is the procedure, except put in a claim which is done?
Well, they put the claim in, yes.
What is the, I mean, the procedure strikes me as all rather nebulous.
Yes.
I mean, they've made a claim, and they've asked for the three things you say, and you've said, as I understand it, no money.
And what we have said is that we're happy to discuss it. We can do the notreid for no fee, for no fees at all, so that's...
I know you said that. Could you just show me where you said, "We're happy to discuss the money"?
Yes, certainly. Maybe look at the procedure itself first, please.
Well, okay, but I...
This is in the exhibits bundle, starting at your page.
Oh, no, actually, I think it would be helpful, just show us very quickly, if you'd be the kind...
Yes, of course.
The letter where the offer...
Yes.
To discuss substantive damages is. You may well be right. Is it the reference that we would go to mediation if necessary, or...
Yes, if you look at page... Page 17 of the exhibits bundle, yes.
17 of the exhibits bundle, thank you.
This is the open letter. It's a tab six, my lady.
Yes, thank you.
Stage one, and then the second sentence. "If considered appropriate, this could include the payment of compensation." Your client didn't even notice, et cetera. "Notwithstanding this, I can confirm that your client's rights remain." You could pursue this initial claim, as the letter you've sent has been taken notice of the problem, and the council treatment memory has been commenced. That's all of course all later in line.
Sorry.
The financial composition remains outstanding, given the law.
Under stage one, it says, "I set out below what should have been happening in this case." And then it says, "Stage one, if considered appropriate, this could include the payment of compensation."
Yeah.
That's a rather different thing from saying, "We will consider paying compensation to you."
Well, but, given the...
I mean, what I find difficult about this, to be perfectly honest, is that it does seem to me that he's made his claim, and it's up to you to come up with an offer. I mean, or to discuss it, or to offer to have a meeting, or I don't know what. But just saying there is a process, which is not really defined. I don't see, I mean, your submission, your primary submission, is that there is a point in ordering a stay now for this process to go ahead. But what, what is the process? What's going to happen if you've had years to make an offer to this chap?
Well, if you made an offer, we'll treat for free. But what we will not do is pay your costs if we consider we are necessary.
Mr Calipettis, you can't be so silly. I'm sure you know this. Treating it for free is one thing. You've just submitted that.
Yes.
The other things are loss of enjoyment and loss of value. And Mr Churchill plainly wants all three. So you have to say to Mr Churchill, "We are prepared to pay you X for number two and X for number three, and we will treat for free." And if you said that, and Mr Weir has made a great deal out of costs and costs, now, that would be a process which we could all understand. But just saying that there is a process, which we resolutely sort of just say the process, this is a process, this is a process, this is a process, till your family put it blue in the face, doesn't really take the matter forward.
On page 17, as I said, it does say, "If appropriate, this could include payment of compensation."
Yes, I know.
And that would be damages, surely, loss of value.
The process is, if appropriate, it can include payment of compensation. But he's already told you he wants compensation, and he's told you how much. What's your point? What do you say?
I mean, that's the passage you rely on. Separate point, turn the page. One of Mr Weir's main points is the fact that you were not offering an option that would contemplate costs recovery. And I'm just focusing on the fourth paragraph, Mr Calipettis.
Yes.
It does make it really very clear, doesn't it, that you were not contemplating, the process was not contemplating, the use of lawyers.
Yes, indeed.
And therefore, by definition, the recovery of costs for lawyers on the part of Mr Churchill.
And it is. But that doesn't stop us discussing it in a mediation.
This is not mediation.
Why should someone engage with the process described in this document? After, if they, if they, if their position is they want to recover something towards their costs, if this document makes it absolutely clear that as effectively a precondition to entering this, you have to understand that you're never going to get any costs.
But the fact that they consider the costs to have been incurred unnecessarily, forgive me, in a mediation, it doesn't mean that you're, when you're discussing the way ahead of possible result resolution.
Yes, but this is not mediation. This is the ICP process.
Yes.
And this paragraph is effectively saying, "You can't use lawyers." It's a cost-free option, yet complaint is made that Mr Churchill consulted lawyers before even contacting the council, and ADR should be attempted and in appropriate circumstances without the use of lawyers.
And then, if I may, in the next paragraph, it says, "This, which is legal fees, is unacceptable. We consider all solicitors' costs to date to be incurred unnecessarily." Couldn't be clearer?
That is the view by the writer of this letter at the time in January 2022. And it's still saying, look, if you turn to, sorry, turn to our complaints procedure, part of the discussion of your problems is, if you suffered loss, look, we'll make it good. And as I say, if you look on page eight, if you'd be kind enough to, the IPC itself, you'll see that the person who's investigating your concerns firstly aims to step to the facts, and occasionally we might suggest mediation or another method to try and resolve the disputes. Well, the dispute will be, "I want some costs." And you talk about the real world. In the mediation, the real world would be, "Look, how can you expect the claimant not to have good advice as to what his legitimate claim is? It will be obvious." And one of the arguments would be, "Arrogant, but contemplate paying something towards those costs." It would be an issue. It's a matter for the council, then, if they want to contest the case, but what is wrong with a district judge saying, "I'm going to give you both time to think about it"?
Well, anyway, you say, I mean, the point you're addressing is there is a point in ordering a stay now.
Yes.
And you say, "There is a point in ordering a stay now, so this process can be gone for." Mr Weir says not, because of what you've said in the open letter. I think we just have to leave it at that. I mean, what more can be said?
May I have one final word on that?
Yes, of course. I'm not trying to stop you, Mr...
That's the position at that stage. But just as the claim is put forward for damages in the letter of claim, which we can look at in a moment, has diminished somewhat by the time it gets to before the district judge. So the stance on costs can change in a discussion. As the whole purpose of mediation is the flexibility of the process and the willingness of the parties to compromise.
I mean, we must stop talking about mediation in a case that's not about mediation.
I should go back to mediation and leave litigation to you lawyers, chancing or not.
I mean, the, you know, this case, to me, divides into two very clear parts. The first part is Halsey.
Yes.
And if not Halsey, then what as to the law? And the second part is the rather, what shall we say, LeMonge-like facts. But the judge has decided, well, he decided he couldn't give a stay, and now things have moved on dramatically.
He decided he couldn't give a stay because he interpreted...
Halsey.
A stay, well, Halsey preventing him, forcing somebody to mediate. What he could have done, because he had various powers at that stage, on the stage, to say to encourage, give the richest warning about the possibilities of litigation, and encourage people to think about it. And that would be both sides, both sides. That's what judges do when they are advising parties, "Look, we advise you to consider resolving this in some way or another. Mediation is in one of the courses." That's specifically envisaged in the IPC.
Mr Calipettis, can I understand this? I may have misunderstood you, and that's why I'm asking you this question. I thought, when you spoke to us at the beginning of this appeal, the stay you were asking for was for one month.
Yes.
But I think, unless I misheard you, you now say three months.
Well...
I just want to be clear what it is you're asking for.
Three months at the time of, before the district judge.
Right.
I said one month in response to my lady's question, for this reason. The optimum time for dealing is three months, and we've got one month left. And so I was asking, what's the point of a stay today if they were to decide, if you were to decide to do so? It's a one to give us time to treat it.
Right. So the, yes, so the stay you're asking for is still the one you asked for on whatever day it was, Wednesday, which is one month.
Yes, because it...
Okay.
You do it. That gets rid of the major issue, which is the notreid. And then the parties want to fight this case, then the lawyers will be pleased, and they bear the consequences in costs. What we're going to ask with the greatest respect of my lady and the lordships is that, as far as Halsey is concerned, make no comments about other than the exhibits. With my submission clearly obiter. And if it's obiter, then it is not binding upon the district judge and doesn't constrain him from doing whatever he thinks is just in terms of the procedure of the case actually before him. Secondly, we would appreciate it if you were able to say that an internal complaints procedure, and I'm using my words now, I hope with care, may be appropriate, provided...
Post-action?
Sorry.
Post-action?
Post-action, yes, of course. And post-action in circumstances, well, I shall comment.
Well, you were using your words with care. We should say that an ICP may be appropriate post-action, then what?
Provided it complies with what we respectfully suggest in our written submissions. Complies with the following requirements. And your lordships will see that in my written submissions. Paragraph 17, on page 98 of the subject to submission bundle. And it's tab seven, for those of you...
Yes.
Like me, are using tabs.
Yes, thank you.
There is a minimum to sanctions for non-compliance. Well, then, there is a sanction available, of course, if the district judge were to adjourn for parties to consider, and one party came back and wasn't able to ask, answer the district judge's question, "Did you consider what evidences are that you consider?" If somebody said, "I didn't go anywhere near it because I don't like it, I refuse, you can't force me", that would be a consideration on a potential strikeout. Secondly, it's transparent, effective, designed to resolve the dispute efficiently without preventing resort to the courts if the dispute is not resolved. Again, as has already been said to your ladyship, my lords, if I'm a lady friend of your class, go. But very often people come to a mediation reluctantly, but in fact they do resolve. And if they don't resolve everything, they certainly very often resolve lots of issues and leave one over for trial. That's getting perfectly popular. Any delay is minimal. And your lordships, and as you can read the rest of it, we say there. And particularly D, the process takes account of the possibility parties to have access to legal or expert advice if required. Now, your lordship may say that the ICP as drafted at the moment doesn't make that clear. And, of course, this IPC is drafted in as broad a fashion to cater for all sorts of complaints or issues with the council. So of its very nature, it's loose, and I accept, doesn't identify with the costs that could be recovered. But in many instances, in considering compensation, if a tenant says, "I've had to," sorry, claimant says, "I've had to take advice on what my rights are." I mean, surely entitled to have something towards this cost. Be very ill-advised of the council to say, "You didn't even contemplate." That's in a dispute resolution context. And the greatest advantage...
Does the recent information we received, at least I received, last night or this morning, some additional material, does that shed any light on the question of costs recovery through the ICP? I'm looking at a statement of Mr Jones, the fifth one.
It was simply in art of my lady friend's point in his written submission, there was no statutory backing to the complaints procedure, and we put in the relevant, hope legislative, obviously, so that the council would comply with the Public Wales Act and providing the revision to it.
Right, thank you.
We'd like to look at that, we can, it is in the exhibits bundle.
Right.
I think there's something, really, if you'll forgive me for skimming through, it's a cabinet report. It reviews the corporate complaints policy to make sure it's compliant with the statutory obligation under the Public Services on the Wales Act 2019, as you see in paragraph 1.2 on page 322.
332.
322, my lord.
322 of the exhibits.
Of the exhibits bundle, yes.
All right, thank you.
Your ladyship have it.
Well, I...
We've centered it on...
Page 322 in the exhibits bundle.
It came separately.
Came separately overnight.
I don't think it came over. We, I know.
Oh, it came separately overnight. Okay, I've got it then.
Would your ladyship set it to page for the day of the day at the moment?
Yeah, no, no. I'm not taking a technical point, I'm just looking for the document. Yeah, don't worry, I know where it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got it.
And this is a reference, this is a reference to the document we see, that was, this is a reference to the policy that was provided to Mr. Churchill.
Indeed, my lady, yes.
Right, thank you.
It was in response to Mr. Weir's first argument.
Okay.
And it was still there, particularly in page three, one, nine, which is the letter of...
Yes.
And if I just say in parenthesis, my lady, in fairness to Mr. Jones, who's the solicitor concerned, the original letter has never been found by the council, the reminder was sent on the, I think the sixth, eighth of December, and he responded immediately via email in these six things, I haven't got this, could you send it me again? Which is why his response is in eighth of December. And you'll see, this is the letter of claim, we act, Mr. Churchill for the Definog. And then the letter, second paragraph, the letter has been sent in accordance with the practice direction on pre-action conduct and protocols. Referring particularly to paragraphs thirteen to sixteen.
So the reason why I'm raising the question is because this is a cabinet report dated the fourth of May twenty twenty-one, whereas the ADR offer, your ICP offer was made on the twenty-second of January twenty twenty-one. So are you sure that this document is, as it were, referring to the correct policy?
My lady, I can only say, I'm told it is, it's a review of the corporate complaints policy and it's a cabinet report.
Okay.
I think the important, particular paragraph one point two, which gives the statutory authority to provide a complaints policy.
It does seem at three, ten, three point ten, to be referring to the policy that had been in place since twenty fourteen, so would have presumably been in place in January twenty-one.
No, it says, the current policy has been in place since two thousand and fourteen and the heading is twenty twenty-one policy. Anyway, there we are. You tell us this is all approving the policy document that we see exhibited.
And as you know, this has to go to the ombudsman for approval as being compliant with his requirements. Just looking at the second paragraph again, the letter goes on to say failure to comply with the provisions in all this letter, meaning it act like commens proceedings.
It refers at three point four to a new policy, appendix one, and we are to take appendix one, the new policy, as being the policy that was provided to Mr. Churchill and the one that is in the bundle before us.
Yes, please, my lady.
Right, thank you.
Those are my instructions.
Thank you.
And just to complete, what I told you, as long as you're very happy, delaying the letter, you'll find that on page... That letter, beside the affidavit of Mr. Jones, he put in the exhibits bundle, page three, two, six, I'm sorry about that. Felt more convenient rather than try and upset all the statements, my lord. And the exhibit is at the end of that, which is the letter on the day of the date of the eighth of December.
I'm not in any way trying to second guess you and I certainly don't want to waste time on this, but if you look at three point eleven, it says the new policy, there's clearly been a revision, has been slightly modified to the extent that it reflects the local advocacy services. And do we find reference to local advocacy services in the policy document we have at pages six to eight of the exhibits bundle? I just have a lurking doubt.
Well, I don't think we do.
I don't think this is the right, anyway. Perhaps you could just take further instructions on that and...
I will do.
It doesn't look to me, as I say, I'm not doing a forensic analysis, it doesn't look to me that the policy that's seven to nine is the updated revised twenty twenty-one policy.
May I have leave permission, my lady, to put in the written submissions dealing with this point whilst we're taking part instructions?
Yes, thank you.
My lady, just, if I may just refer you to what I was saying earlier, the only reason we are asking this court to consider the D two J's decision is that if in fact he was not constrained by Halsey, as we hope your lordships will rule, then he would have made the order that we say he wanted to make at the time. And the only reason that he didn't was because he felt constrained by the passage in Halsey, which he referred. And our appeal is on the basis that he was mistaken in that belief, understandably. And manifestly, if he had been able or thought he was able to give the stay that we requested, it was manifestly right to have done it at that stage, albeit that proceedings had been issued. Because as he observed in his justice, we looked at it two days ago, he dealt with the claim in a way to say, look, injunction, so you can't get your damages, the value of your claim has diminished in terms of the value from the letter of claim. And the letter of claim, which is surprisingly was dotted in the bundle, which you could see, sets up a fairly high demand for damages and costs, none of which, as far as the damages are concerned, is proceeded for in front of the district judge, as the diminution value diminished considerably, as was out of the excellent reports, which both sides had had permission. And I leave for my lady, your lordships and my lady to read the rest of that letter. And the other paragraphs we consider, invite you to consider ADR as an immediate resolve of the matter. Now, the importance of this appeal in more general terms, I know that you're being urged not to go in more general terms, which is why I respectfully ask that all we need is a ruling from you that an appropriate procedure can be a form of dispute resolution. It's to be found in Mr. Bigwood's statement, which if you'll forgive me, I'm going to ask Mr. Widdick to deal with because he deals with these days in day, that day out, these type of cases, is referred to by Miss England in her submission to the court. And you would take it to Mr. Bigwood's statement by my lady, from Mr. Weir, but not to the paragraphs, I think, which might be assistance in putting the economic driver issue into perspective. And you have said this morning, the statement of Mr. Jones, which refers to the combined total of expected costs for the local authorities in Wales alone, as ten million pounds was not being claimed. And I think I'm right in saying, but I will confirm this in writing, that the method typical policy has been adopted by many other countries in Wales as well. So if I can turn to the questions that my lord of the boss of the laws asked of Mr. Weir and give you our replies of my name. The first issue is, was the judge right to think that Halsey bound to dismiss the council's application? I've dealt with that, we say, no, that not his fault. And that involves the question whether or not it's a part of the main reasoning. If not, can the court lawfully stay proceedings or order parties to engage in non-court dispute resolution process? They obviously can, under the practice directions. Whilst the issue has been, once the claim has been issued, then how the claim is going to be dealt with is a matter of the court. And why can't they say, even at that stage, in the country authorities, but I'm sure your lordships have them fully in mind, that they are all in the supplement of the white court, their courts have taken to various steps throughout litigation, including, there's one case that I refer to in our submission, it's a Muna al Katib.
So which case?
Muna al Katib. It's not in the estates bundle, in the authorities bundle, but you will find that referred to and I think quoted in our written submissions. Paragraph... Give me a minute, I'll get the reference in a moment. This was a family dispute where the justice thought, as he then was, ordered the parties to consider mediation. This was in the court of appeals, it had been Lord Justice Thorpe. They went to one of the mediators supplied by, or suggested by the court of appeals team, who happened to be a commercial lawyer, and the mediation was not successful. And Lord Justice Thorpe pulled the case back in front of him and gave them a list of family mediators. One of whom was selected by the parties and in fact the issue was resolved. And you'll find that on page one oh four of the written submissions bundle, paragraph thirty-five of our written submissions. And so asking parties, even when proceedings have been conducted, to stop the pause and consider mediation or some form of dispute resolution is not unusual and perfectly within the powers of the court in the context of proceedings before. That's why we say that that's what the district judge could have done if he hadn't felt constrained by Halsey because he interpreted the stay as forcing Mr. Churchill to go to mediation effectively or dispute resolution. The third issue, I think, that my lord of the boss of the laws raised with Mr. Weir, is that perhaps should the court decide whether to stay the proceedings or order the parties to engage in non-court based dispute resolution processes? And that involves the kind of process, I agree entirely, it does involve the kind of process. And we think that the court, so we submit respectfully, that the court could decide by saying, look, these are the risks that you run, this is the consequence if we test this case. My advice is go and consider either accepting the council's offer of controlling the not read and discuss between you his claim for damages, or go to a mediation if you need a third party. There's a variety of things that the district judge had the power to do and those powers, with the greatest respect to Mr. Weir's arguments, perfectly lawful. This is all then post-action, once the action has been started at the election of the claimant, then he is subject to the way that the court decides to deal with it. In my respectful, we did a perfectly proper direction to give, to fulfil the needs of the Civil Justice Act, fair and efficient. Fair means fair to all parties, as well, if I may say so, to the legal system. And the whole purpose of these IPCs is threefold. One, to see whether or not the issue can be resolved without necessity of litigation, that's already passed because they've issued. Secondly, to see whether or not it can be agreement on the more contentious issues on which there's a district liability, in this case it would be the allegation of constructive knowledge. And thirdly, if possible, to see if a resolution can be achieved. Now, I for one, not for a moment, argue that if the claimant in those situations sought legal advice, he shouldn't have it. And if he seeks legal advice and is reasonable, there's no reason why that can't be contemplated by the council. If the council say no and fight a case on the basis that we are not paying a single pound in costs and the court at the end of the day considers that's unreasonable, then they face the consequences. So I hold no candle for anybody who is, words of some of my only friends, using a complaints procedure to limit their responsibility or get off lightly. A responsible complaints procedure is the opposite, is to preserve relationship.
I mean, just so you can deal with it, Mr. Calabettis.
Yes.
The actual complaints procedure that was stated to be enforced in the open letter...
Yes.
Says they would not pay costs, full stop. Now, do you say that that is something people should be required to go into?
I'm constrained by, I know what my instructions would be. If you're asking me as an advocate, I can say to your lord, if you're asking me as a mediator, it would be foolish.
Well, I don't think, I'm asking for your submission, I think your submission is you do.
I pray that you...
Thank you. No evidence in this court.
I'm sorry, my lord.
No evidence is given in this court.
No, I pray that's right. And then should the judge have exceeded the council's application to say proceedings to allow, to pursue the complaint? Well, as you know, we say yes, it could because there was an advantage to be gained. And I still think, as I said on the first day, there are several consequences of suing that. Those rights, which in the open letter, are still open to you, is if it doesn't achieve a settlement, it'll certainly know the issues for any subsequent dispute procedure like a mediation. All this designed, in my respectful submission, for the efficient and fair civil justice system, to avoid the courts being cluttered up with cases simply for costs. Now, I know there's a provision, if the parties couldn't agree either on the costs or the level of costs, there's a very simple solution. They can agree somebody to be appointed to arbitrate that particular issue, it often happens, and if they can't agree on the quantum, they can simply submit them for the fall to be taxed. Now, if you, ladyship will permit me and my lord will permit me, I'd hand it to Mr. Widdick, I think I must have caught what Mr. Weir has suffered from. He will do, if I may, with the single issue on the Mr. Bigwood's statement and the housing disrepair.
On Mr. Bigwood's statement?
Yes.
Right.
As raised by my lady, Mr. Weir, let me just draw your attention to certain parts of it, which we think will help your sisters.
All right.
And if Birmingham City and Lee is also very in trouble, your lordships, he deals with that days in, day out as well, I'll ask him to deal with it as well.
Thank you very much, I think Mr. Lord Justice Burris is the best for you, Mr. Calabettis.
Mr. Calabettis, just before you do that, can I just ask one question which relates to this? If you, your submission is that we should allow the appeal and direct a stay.
Or revert you back to the county court, yes.
If you will. What happens to the finding about reasonableness if a stay is ordered for mediation? Because then what's happening is that the litigant who didn't want to be engaged in that process is effectively engaging in the process. So what happens to the finding of unreasonableness?
It hasn't been appealed.
I understand that, but if your appeal is successful and a stay is ordered for mediation, I mean, your submission, as I understand what you've just said to me, is that finding remains?
Yes, it will remain.
Okay.
And it goes back to the county court because it's on appeal to the county court, of course.
Well, of course, I understand it goes back to the county court, I guess.
And the county court judge could take that into account, as I said, give what I call the witch's warning.
Okay, I've got your submission, that's...
Yes, you've got my point on that, yeah, and that would be part of it, court's already ruled and you bear the consequences. It doesn't stop him going to what he wishes to, which is why all of Mr... It doesn't stop him going to what he wishes to, which is why all of Mr Weir's arguments, with forgiveness, are beside the point. It's not our case to say you can't go to law. All we're saying is, if you want to go to law, before you do so, consider the
Thank you.
Extrude the cost of doing it.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Yes, Mr Widdick, so the policy that we've been, that was provided to Mr Churchill is in fact not the updated May 2021 policy.
My lady, no, I have done a quick internet search and have emailed you a copy of the policy as it was promulgated on the May.
Pretty unsatisfactory, pretty unsatisfactory for us to be given very late material that is in itself then not accurate.
My lady, my apologies. I should say that the policy which appears in your papers, in the exhibits at pages four to 11, is the policy which pertained when the claim was received by Mertha Tidfield.
Yes.
And that is the policy that he would have received.
Yes.
The policy was then updated and the updated policy referred only to the availability of advocacy services and otherwise was substantially unchanged. Its wording and its processes remained unchanged.
Well, which policy are you seeking to engage now?
By necessity, it would be the policy that was put in place in May 2021.
Right, so we've been looking at the wrong policy, have we?
We have. In fact, it makes no difference whatsoever to the way in which that policy would be operated.
Okay.
And in particular, my lady.
Well, show me where the local advocacy services, that is referred to at least. That seems to me that may be relevant to all sorts of things.
I think it's advocacy in a different sense.
Yes, it is.
It's, yeah, it's advocating on behalf of vulnerable people and that kind of thing, isn't it?
My lord, I have had three minutes to look at it while I've been.
I haven't got the document that includes the advocacy services and I would like to have it. Have you sent it by email?
I've sent it to Mr Ashworth by email.
I can send it to you.
Okay, well, that's fine. We'll get it in due course.
If my lady has already seen it, then presumably.
Well, I've opened it.
It's already arrived in your email inbox.
It has. I will forward it to Ross the rules if you see it.
I hope, my lord, it would be in your inbox.
It's coming very quickly from her ladyship to me. I don't wonder the electronic transmission.
Oh, well, it is extraordinary that I was able to look at it in the time that you were talking about it. And an advantage of being electronic.
Did you want to go to Bigwood?
Yes, I did. Before we go, my lady and my lords, might I just mention that when Mr Calipettis was being taken through pages seven and eight of the, um, sorry, I'll get my reference right. He was taken through the open letter of the twenty fifth of January 2022 with you. And I, in fairness, I don't know, he got the opportunity to mention the remainder of the content of that letter. And I would submit that it's something that we do need to consider because it's been put that the complaints procedure had been tried and it had been exhausted and had failed. The remainder of the page that you were looking at, page seventeen in the exhibits, did confirm that the client's rights remained. It's the paragraph at the bottom of the page. You can pursue this initial complaint as the letter you sent has been taken as a notice of the problem and the council's treatment programme has been commenced. Question of financial compensation remains.
So what page are you on?
Page seventeen.
Yes.
So he invited him to continue, or rather, he invited Mr Rodriguez to advise his client to continue the complaints process. And additionally, if your client's unhappy about any aspect of treatment so far, he's able to add to that complaint. But if you go to the following page, lady, and this is where we say there is a substantial divergence between the claimant's position and ours. Stage two, if the manager failed to uphold the complaint, the claimant could then ask that the matter be considered by a manager independent of the department subject to the complaint. Again, they would have the same powers to order medial work or even compensation. I confirm that this stage two procedure is still available to your client. So the compensation in stage one and the hold of stage two is available. Stage three, he then refers to, is the option of referring the matter to the ombudsman, again, at nil cost to either party. And most important, my lady, at nil risk of costs and adverse costs order against Mr Churchill if his complaint is rejected by the ombudsman. And this is a fundamental protection to Mr Churchill, which is not afforded to him in the litigation process in which he then, we would say, ill-advisedly engaged. And, my lady and my lords, I say that that protection goes both ways. It protects the council against an order for costs in normal circumstances when a complaint has been resolved through the internal complaints process. But it also protects Mr Churchill. And given the circumstances of this case, that protection is of paramount importance to Mr Churchill. Because in the claim, as Mr Calipettis has observed, he first of all claimed in his letter of claim nearly sixty thousand pounds. The amount then oscillated and at various stages was somewhere between forty five and sixty thousand. In the letter of, sorry, in the N five claim form, it was put at forty two thousand. And then in the particulars of claim, the injunction for the treatment was claimed and the diminution in value as set out in his valueless report, which was, as the ladyship and the lordships will remember, reduced by that stage to ten thousand pounds if the treatment wasn't undertaken and only five thousand pounds if it was. There is a further report which my clients, Mertha, then obtained from another firm of pre, of, sorry, another firm of surveyors. And confusingly, they are also called Apex Surveyors. And they produced a detailed report which was then sent to the claimant. And it said that the new RICS guidelines had come into force since the claim had been intimated. And in his opinion, the diminution in value, because the knotweed was so far from the house, it was on the other side of a public footpath and down at the bottom of the garden, the diminution in value would be reduced to zero. So Mr Churchill's expert had valued it once at twenty seven thousand pounds in diminution value. That was with the letter of claim. The second time he valued it at between five and ten thousand pounds. And then, after he had valued it at that lower figure, the council's valuer brought the claim for diminution value down to zero. Now, my lady, I say that's important and it is, I would say, a matter that both the court was entitled, as it did, to take into account when considering what to do with this claim. And also something which has a wider significance. And that brings me to the point of Mr Bigwood's witness statement and the exhibits which he produced. Might I first say, in respect of Mr Bigwood's witness statement, your lady and your lordships may have noted that Slough Borough Council applied to intervene in this appeal. They were.
Swindon.
Swindon, I do apologize. They were not permitted to do so because Charlotte had already intervened. But when it came to evidence in relation to the prevalence of these claims and the problems that the substantial costs being generated were causing to landlords. Mr Bigwood, who is a member of the Lawyers in Local Government group, got a survey which he exhibited to his witness statement. And the survey was, uh, it's at, um, it's three hundred and seventeen, I believe, of the exhibits bundle. The survey asked a number of questions about these claims in a housing conditions context. And I should add that since the Homes Fitness and Habitation Act 2018 came into force, most housing lawyers now call housing disrepair claims, housing conditions claims, because they incorporate both disrepair and unfitness. Now, the results of the survey at page three hundred and seventeen have a remarkable resonance when it comes to considering this claim on its facts in which, by the time we got to that application back in March 2022, Mr Churchill's solicitors had spent thirty three thousand pounds in costs plus VAT. And they were anticipating spending another hundred and fifty thousand. And we were looking at what I described in that note, a quarter of gross disproportionality.
And so what's the purpose of taking us to the results of the survey at page three hundred and seventeen?
This, my lady, shows that this is a, it is a countrywide and pernicious problem that the proper application of the availability of an internal complaints process addresses. Because as Mr Calipettis says, it acts as a gateway. And if one looks at the analysis, there are four points which are made.
Where?
In page three hundred and seventeen.
Yes.
Paragraph one A, all respondents.
I don't have a paragraph one A on page three hundred and seventeen.
I have a, unedited remarks.
Sorry, yes, it's, my version is the, it's page three hundred and twelve, three hundred and thirteen
Right.
Of the paper bundle.
Says analysis.
It is analysis. One A, all respondents reported that tenant solicitors refused to use the internal complaints process regularly or often. All respondents reported that claims had been received which were standardised regularly or often. And nineteen of twenty one respondents reported that tenants sometimes regularly or often obstructed access for repairs. All of those three factors are present in this claim. In that, first of all, the, obviously, the whole point of Mr Rodriguez's objection was that he wouldn't use the internal complaints process. The letter that Mr Rodriguez sent, along with its enclosures, was standardised. And in that regard, might I?
Just to help me, this is an L L G survey, open for ten days. Number of respondents?
There were twenty one responses.
Right, twenty one responses. Out of how many available potential, how many people were the subjects of the survey received?
My lady, I do not know. I know that there are approximately eight hundred members of the L L G. I do not know how many got the survey, how many.
Right. I mean, is your, what is your overarching point here? That this is all claim and solicitor driven and unreasonable and a costs farming, claims farming exercise? Is that what you're trying to say?
Lady, yes, and it is very, it's put into stark focus.
Yes.
One looks at, first of all, the unedited remarks of the seventeen respondents who added to any other comments. Number one, in nearly all cases, no complaints have been made. The council's internal complaints process is not used. First notification is the letter of claim. It's directly contrary to Mr Bates's submission to you that a landlord will always have had notice through a tenant complaint before a housing conditions claim is received. That is not the experience of these landlords. And there are, as one can see from the subsequent exhibit, many of those social housing units which this survey looks at. And can I take you, as we go to that second exhibit, to page three one six on the paper and page three twenty of the bundle? It's response eleven.
I've got to three twenty.
It's paragraph eleven and it's on.
All right, page three sixteen.
Three sixteen and then three twenty of the PDF bundle. That CFA firms that send thousands of speculative emails around and then use a call centre worker to engage a tenant on their CFA to authorize the solicitor to file a claim at the outset, send a standardised letter of claim, follow a standard receiving formula with no legal assessment, never display any willingness to analyse legal issues such as the degree, causation, mitigation and intent on conduct. Cases are dragged towards trial. Lady, I'm not going to read all the comments, but what I would urge you to do when you're considering whether this is an urgent and substantial issue is to bear those comments in mind of all sorts.
For what purpose? To draw the inference that this is effectively a lawyer-driven, unmeritorious claim the result of cold calling and all sorts?
Yes, as Mr Jones pointed out, there were, in the seven local authorities within his small area, out of the thirty two in Wales, he was looking at a ten million pound problem in terms of the costs generated, taking the hundred and fifty thousand pounds as the figure that Dermot Smith had provided in their precedent age.
But this is the economic driver point, but I just don't see how we can expect it to deal with making factual determinations over who's right and who's wrong. I mean, you're alleging this is a, to put it globally, a bad, a bad thing. And they're saying that anybody is entitled to legal rights. We can decide the legal questions and unless this goes to the point that Mr Calipettis has already made, which is that we should grant a stay now, I don't really see where it takes us.
My lord, it goes right back to that question that's raised by both Mr Bates and Mr Weir, which is whether the judge was right to view it as an unreasonable step in the proceedings, the refusal.
Well, that's not subject to appeal.
Exactly.
Well, but beyond that, I think the point Mr Weir makes is I'm not, he's not arguing about it as a matter of subjective or objective, but reasonable behaviour. It's a matter of principle, he's saying. Because, for example, of the lack of legal representation, it's not fit for purpose as a matter of principle. It can't be unreasonable as a matter of, not constitutional, but as a matter of theory and principle to refuse to engage in an ICP like this, ignoring any background or underlying facts or the exchange of correspondence. It's as simple as that, he would say.
Yes. I know that one of my friends, Mr Calipettis, has already addressed this issue and I'm cautious of taking any further court time. But the fact is that in unison, the extraordinary increase in the level of court fees was a bar. And there was evidence that it was a bar to litigants proceeding. And that was an absolute bar. It wasn't a conditional bar. If you were poor, but not too poor to get relief from fees.
Yes.
Health fees, you could not afford the jump in the employment tribunal's fees. And that was what the court found as a matter of fact on that claim. And it applies to all employment claims.
Yes.
One will remember that it was a, it was a decision on the part of the government. it was a decision on the part of the government that was rined for overturning. Whereas this is a completely different situation because nobody is stopping an individual who goes through the complaints process from getting legal advice either at stage one or stage two. There's nothing in the policy which says we are not going to pay. It's in Mr. Jones's open letter, we've looked at your conduct and we find it unreasonable. And as a result, we are not going to pay. That's Mr. Jones's view.
His view about cost free and not using lawyers was irrespective of the merits of this case?
It is a process which is not intended to be used with lawyers on both sides. That is absolutely right. And lady, that applies to any internal complaints process operated as, for instance, in Alasini. I don't believe that people were intended to obtain a lawyer in the informal process that was suggested to Mr. Alasini. And in other cases, but in all internal complaints procedures, there is no suggestion that there is an implied right to reclaim costs. That does bring us to the question of Birmingham City Council and League. And lady, again, we've been somewhat ambushed by the production of reliance on Birmingham City Council and League.
Not by the production.
No, because we dealt with it very briefly. Both the Charles submissions dealt with it in saying that it was a welcome decision from the Court of Appeal because the Court of Appeal said that tenants could recover costs if the involvement of their lawyers was justified, if the claim turned out to be justified within the pre-action process. In other words, the pre-action protocol for housing conditions. And that protocol specifically provides for the recovery of costs. I think it's paragraph eleven of the protocol. It says, if the tenant succeeds to, in getting works and damages out of a landlord within the pre-action protocol, then the landlord will normally pay the costs. Court of Appeal then said, if one looks at the authorities' bundle, which was I think it starts at ninety-six in the authorities' bundle, but it is paragraphs thirty-four and onwards that are important for these purposes. The words that were used by Lord Justice Hughes in that case in paragraph thirty-four at the bottom, limit the recoverability of costs in an important way. Tenant who has a justifiable claim for disrepair needs legal assistance in advancing it. Two words there are important. One is that it's a claim. And the second is that they need legal assistance in advancing it. This word, claim, means exactly that. It does not mean a complaint which a tenant might make that repairs or works have not been carried out. And again, lady, that has an exact parallel in this case because Mr. Churchill, I realised he had not read in two thousand and sixteen. He then in two thousand and twenty, when he saw the advert, thought, well, there's an opportunity, presumably, to claim some damages as well as getting the not read treated. In the same way, a tenant who does not notify their landlord of not just the existence of a defect, but of dissatisfaction with the way that landlord has tried to repair or has failed to repair that defect, should then use the internal complaints process. And the pre-action protocol for housing conditions claims is unique amongst all the protocols, except that for judicial review, in that it expressly provides that the very manner in which the tenant should then consider alternative dispute resolution is through the landlord's internal complaints process. Now, for those purposes, when Lord Justice Hughes said, claim, provided that the claim was justified, it's a legal claim, it's not a complaint, that's point number one. The complaint is, dear Bristol City Council, I have not had my roof repaired. Please do it because I'm very unhappy. That's then a stage one complaint. There is a response, an offer of compensation and an offer of works. Tenant doesn't like it, he goes to stage two. And if then the tenant doesn't like that, then he issues a legal claim. And I would suggest that Birmingham City Council and League needs some clarification on that point because tenant solicitors are minded just to jump in and say, here's our letter of claim. Our tenant is suffering from disrepair. As you've seen from Darrell Bigwood's exhibit, almost invariably, there is no either previous complaint of disrepair or, and almost certainly, there is no formal complaint. There has been no indication that they are formally unhappy with the state of repair. It goes directly back to how Mr. Churchill behaved in this case. And it is, unfortunately, it is behaviour which is seen in no win, no fee solicitors' claims. And it's not surprising because if the internal complaints process operates, then in all likelihood, works will be done. The value of a claim will fall below the small claims court limit, at which point they don't have any entitlement to costs. So when Lord Justice Hughes said the tenant must initiate the claim in accordance with the protocol, it's talking about a legal claim, not talking about the internal complaints process. And it's the effect of the claim is to get the work done and providing the landlord is liable for the disrepair, the tenant ought to recover the reasonable costs and achieving that result. We've no complaint about that. But it is the words, if the effect of the claim is to get the work done. In a housing conditions claim, that means the tenant's letter of claim is the only reason the works were done. In fact, when a letter of claim is received, as per the Ombudsman's guidance nowadays, the complaints process should be put into operation. And it should not stop just because there has been a letter of claim. If the internal complaints process then succeeds in resolving the matter, it will all be over in the time limit that is allowed by the complaints process.
Can I just stop you for a minute? We're dealing with an appeal on the basis of three grounds of appeal. And we cannot go beyond them. And I'm afraid I feel that we're now getting into a territory where it would be most unwise for us to tread without full and proper argument. And the issues in the appeal, on which there are grounds of appeal, the only issues, there is no respondent's notice, is that the judge had made a mistake in concluding that Allzy prevented him staying in the claim. Alternatively, if he was correct in concluding that, that decision should be clarified. And thirdly, a proper consideration of the C P R and the principle that litigation should be a last resort allows the court to stay premature in unnecessary claims and to stay or strike out claims.
My lord.
Now, just let me finish. We've had a lot of argument about all sorts of things, like housing condition claims and this particular I C P. But there is no ground of appeal that asks us to decide anything about that. Why should we?
Well, my lord, if you are content not to follow what Mr. Bates and what Mr. Weir were suggesting you say, which was that effectively everybody who is engaging in an internal complaints procedure ought somehow to be given the right to legal advice. Because that's the effect of what he is saying.
Well, it's not quite what he said.
It's not quite.
We have to deal with his submissions, of course we do.
My lord, if you are content.
But only insofar as they resist the grounds of appeal that you have put forward.
Yes.
What I'm asking you is why we have to deal with all these facts, which are, if I may say so, fairly opaque to me. They seem to have changed again this morning in a way that will cause, at the very least, cause us quite a bit of confusion because we don't know which end is up. What I thought we were here to deal with was your notice of appeal, signed by you.
Yes, my lord, I'm happy if it doesn't trespass on the territory of Birmingham City Council and League. That is
I can't promise you anything, Mr. Bates.
It's been raised this morning by Mr. Weir and I respond to it on that basis. That what he is seeking there, seems to me, is, in your judgment, for you to say that this internal complaints process is by its nature unfair and in breach of art six. That's as I see it, the
Well, he does say that.
My lord?
He does say that.
He does say that. And I
And he says, I imagine, as a result of that, we should not conclude, as you say, in two of your notices of appeal.
That's it, yes, my lord. And I do say that if he's going to bring up Birmingham City Council and League, then I have only to make the observation that that does not preclude a decision from you that an internal complaints procedure can be operated without the involvement of lawyers.
I mean, the real problem here is there are internal complaints procedure across industrial and consumer sectors in literally millions of companies, authorities, local authorities, public authorities, up and down the country, all in different terms. And I don't see how we can hope to cover or provide any general guidance in that situation.
As long as your lordship and your lordship are not going to say that it seems to you that an internal complaints procedure must by definition provide for
No, I think with great respect, I think you're completely mischaracterising the argument being advanced by Mr. Weir. The argument by Mr. Weir is that because of the features of the I C P, which do not contemplate legal lawyers' involvement, it would be unlawful to stay. That's the point. It's not the procedure is inherently bad or unlawful. It's the interaction between those features of the I C P and the power to stay either pre or post action. Have I correctly understood that, Mr. Weir? Yes, it's not the I C P itself. We're not, nobody, even Mr. Weir is not inviting us to say that these I C Ps are all bad. It's the interaction between the features of the I C P, as he identifies them, and the power, if any, of the court to stay in the circumstances where there is no cost recovery. And he says the policy, the procedure is designed to exclude lawyers.
But it does not
On one side. That's the way it's put, just so you're clear. That's the argument you're meeting.
The argument also conflates the word settlement with acceptance of an internal complaints procedure offer. As Mr. Calipettis pointed out, it is one thing to settle a claim within an internal complaints procedure and sign something which says, I accept this sum and I'm not going to litigate. It's another thing entirely, simply to accept the offer made in the internal complaints procedure. Because one can then go on to litigate in an entirely untrammelled manner. It does not stop.
You may be able to, but you see, the difference between you, as I understand it, is that Mr. Weir says because of the features of the I C P, there is no power to stay. You say there is a power to stay, even if people simply say, I want to discuss one small aspect of the case and one other party unreasonably refuses to discuss or to mediate, say, that small aspect of the case. The court, in all the circumstances, might and has power to grant a stay. And it all depends on the circumstances. So Mr. Weir says it's black and white, you can't stay unless certain features exist. You say you can, you may not, but you can. Now, if we're with Mr. Weir, then there's no question of granting a stay. If we're with you, we do not need to decide whether now there is to be a stay or not because the circumstances are so very complex and difficult and everything else. And if we get into the weeds, I know it's a fun, of all the if we get into the weeds of all the things that have happened in this case, we will be way outside the notice of appeal. And for my part, anyway, I'm simply not prepared to go there. I want to decide what you've asked me to decide, points one, two and three, which I think raises the issues I put and probably not the fourth one, but we can think about that.
Maybe Mr. Calipettis will want to address you further. Might I just finally mention, in terms of the civil procedure rules, one rule that seems to have been omitted by everyone, which is C P R three point one four, which is at page sixty-nine of the White Book, which
We don't need to look it up. Which one is it?
It is the provision that allows the court to make sanctions in respect of a failure to comply with the practice directions, pre-action protocols. And the notes on that subsection are to be found at page eighty-one of the twenty twenty-three edition at three point one point fifteen, where it says that that position puts beyond doubt the ability of the court to make sanctions in accordance with paragraphs thirteen to sixteen of the practice directions of the pre-action protocol. So there is an express provision in the rules for the imposition of sanctions for a failure to engage in alternative dispute resolution. And that includes, obviously, pre-action.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Whittaker. Mr. Calipettis?
Final word, my lady. We also, last few notes, refer to the alternative dispute resolution passage in the White Book's A D R and costs, which is fourteen thirteen, page three thousand and seven through to three thousand and nine. And without wishing to make, sorry, in three thousand and twelve, the cases are further to where the court has wanted to stay even though proceedings have been commenced. There's the decision of my lord, the master of laws, and the decision of my lord, Lord Justice Burress. And they all aduminate precisely what we're saying. And reverting to what my lord, the law, Master Rolls has said, precisely right, all we are seeking from this appeal is a clarification of Lord Dyson's remarks, that they are not impediment for the fair and efficient resolution of disputes in the future, as they have been the last twenty years. And as I say, if you felt able to, then it would be helpful to say that a complaints procedure is an appropriate resolution provided it meets that criteria. And then, I agree with the master of laws, you can't make decisions in this case for every possible complaints procedure. That would be a matter for each individual claimant and solicitor applying to the court for whatever relief they want if proceedings have been done. And then the judgment of that particular court and taking into consideration all that we have discussed. I'm sorry you've been taken down the paths other than the not read. I suppose that was the consequence of asking intervenors, and all the interveners, of course, if they're, forgive me for putting it this way, have their own axe to grind. But in the main, that's what this appeal is about. I'm grateful to my lord, Master Rolls, summarising it that way. That, if I may say so, is why I am here. I think it holds you at the very beginning. Twenty years I've been waiting for this. And I hope this court is going to fulfil the expectations of Lord Justice Ward and be bold about it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calipettis. Now, despite everybody's best efforts, this hearing has gone uphill and downhill in certain respects. Now, despite everybody's best efforts, this hearing has gone uphill and down dale in certain respects. Is there some tidying up to be done in the light of the way that the arguments have developed, Mr Weir?
Not for me, my lady, thank you.
There's some activity behind you. Is there any tidying up to be done behind? No, Mr Calipettis, you floated the idea that you might want twenty-four hours or so to put anything in in writing. Having had the opportunity that you have, does that still remain as an outstanding request?
My lord, let me reflect, I suspect not, but I will confirm the position about the complaints procedure, the appropriate one that you should be looking at.
Right, well, in that case, I'm going to make a direction that if anybody does have, well, if you, Mr Calipettis, have anything that you need to add, a short written note by four P M on Monday, please. And I hope that will be an end of the exchanges that we've had in terms of new material and the like. You don't want anything else to add, anything else that you want to add?
Pretty grateful, yes.
You're very welcome, thank you very much. Mr Weir, thank you. Well, again, to repeat our thanks to everybody involved in this case, not only to council, but also to everyone attending remotely and to those sitting behind council. We are obviously going to be reserving our judgements, we will deliver drafts in the normal way. Under an embargo, it will be very important in this case, given the number of people involved, that the embargo is, as ever, strictly complied with. The sanctions for non-compliance are severe and penal in nature. I take it there is no objection to the intervenors receiving a draft embargo at the same time as any, or of the, both parties? No, I think that will be sensible in all the circumstances. But please keep an eye on it and make sure that there are no unwelcome complications in a case like this nature with so many people involved. It would be most unfortunate in a high-profile matter for things to go wrong. Anything else, Colin? No, thank you all very much indeed.